Hear me? Is that on? Oh, okay. Everybody hear me? All right. I'm gonna start this regular school board meeting. It is May ninth, twenty twenty-two, at six P. M. Dr. Salazar, pledge of allegiance. Do we have anyone helping us with the pledge today?
Yes, Mr. Trevino, members of the board. This evening, we have students from Los Cuates Middle School and Rancho Verde Elementary here to introduce us for, uh, to the students of Los Cuates Middle School is, uh, the proud principal of Los Cuates, Mr. Padilla. I'm sorry, Mrs. Chavez, I didn't mean to do that to you.
I was gonna go with her part.
And also, we're, we're gonna be introduced to students from Rancho Verde by, uh, the proud principal of Rancho Verde, Mrs. Chavez. Mr. Padilla.
Board President Garcia, Dr. Salazar, members of board. My name is Antonio Padilla. I'm the proud principal of Los Cuates Middle School. It's my pleasure today to introduce two sixth-grade students. First, we have, uh, sixth-grade student Alexia Gomez. Her parents are Carla and Jesus Gomez. There she goes. Uh, she's twelve years old, currently in the top ten in her grade level. She takes all honors courses as part of our LCMS choir and is a straight-A student. She enjoys nature, swimming, dancing, and just having fun in general. So, Alexia Gomez. Up next, we have Juan Pablo Santos. His parents are Melissa and Victor Santos. He's eleven years old, currently is in the top ten as well. He takes all honors courses as part of our LCMS band, is truly passionate about science because it intrigues him. Uh, he also enjoys playing sports with his favorite being basketball and football. So, without further ado, Juan Pablo Santos.
Good evening. My name is Mary Chavez, proud principal of Rancho Verde Elementary, and I have with us two outstanding students from RVE. First of all, we have Gonzalo Garcia Hernandez. He is a fourth-grade student at Rancho Verde Elementary. He is the son of Gonzalo and Marisol Garcia Sanchez. Gonzalo participated in flag football and basketball. He participates in the after-school program. Gonzalo's favorite subject in school is math, and he is an A/B honor roll student. Next, I'd like to, I'd like to present Alyssa Mendez. Alyssa is a third-grade student at Rancho Verde Elementary. She is the daughter of Juan Miguel and Nicole Mendez. Alyssa participated in EAE oral reading. She is a member of the volleyball team and the chess team. Her favorite subject in school is science, and she is an A honor roll student.
Ladies and gentlemen, these children are here to help lead us in the pledge. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Can everyone remain standing for a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Can the parents of these wonderful kids please stand up and be recognized? Great job, parents. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Castillo, can you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Sandra Garcia unable to make it. Mr. Ruben Trevino?
I'm here.
I am here. Martín Castillo, Ms. Letizia Quintero unable to make it. Mr. Ray Farias unable to make it. Mr. Jesús Amaya, present. Mr. Donald Henderson?
Present.
Dr. Gonzalo Salazar?
Present.
Ms. Priscilla Delaga.
Present.
Thank you. We're gonna move on with the agenda. Uh, Roman numeral five, district recognition. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Trevino and members of the board, this evening, and, uh, in keeping with our practice, each month we set time aside to recognize the achievements of our students. Tonight is no, no exception. And this evening, uh, we begin with American Math Competition. And here to introduce us to our outstanding students is Ms. Sarah Tadon, curriculum coordinator for Los Fresnos.
Good evening, vice president, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. Today I'll be presenting the winners of American Mathematics Competition, also known as AMC for levels eight, ten, and twelve. Just to give you a little bit of that background, the American Mathematics Competition, also known as AMC, it's the longest-running and most prestigious math contest in the United States. The contest is made possible by the Mathematics Association of America, which is dedicated to strengthening the mathematical capabilities of our nation's youth. Students at Los Fresnos High School, Los Fresnos United, and this year our three middle schools have participated in the competition over six years, and they have been extremely successful. After the pandemic, multiple research studies have shown that there have been a decline in the air mathematics achievement. However, our students at Los Fresnos ISG have shown significant gains in academic competition, including AMC. So, out of one thousand seven hundred and fifty-six schools across the nation, we had our AMC eight team in the top twenty-five percent of the nation, our AMC ten in the top fifty percent of the nation, and our AMC twelve in the top thirty percent of the nation. So, they have made significant gains, although we have some declines in mathematical achievement across the nation. I would like to ask the campus administrators to please join me at this time so that they may hand the certificates to the winners. We're gonna start with AMC eight. In third place, Viviana Oyarviles. She could not be here today, but her principal, Ms. Elisa Pinera, is with us today. We also have, in third place, from Los Cuates Middle School, Judith Smear. He could not be here with us today, but Bradon Landry also got third place. In third place, we also had Nicolás García from Liberty Memorial. We had a four, five-way tie in third place. We had Eduardo Delgado as well from Los Cuates Middle School. In second place, we had Samuel Mondragon from Los Cuates Middle School. And in first place, we had Jordan Peña from Liberty Memorial Middle School. We're now gonna move on to AMC ten. We had a three-way tie for third place. Uh, in third place, we had Cindy Peña from Los Fresnos United. We also had Eduardo Mendez from Los Fresnos United. Dante Galván from Los Fresnos United. He's a freshman. In second place, we had Olivia Noyola from Los Fresnos United. We had Christian Dávila from Los Fresnos United. Alejandro Coronado from Los Fresnos United, who couldn't be with us today. In first place, we had a two-way tie. We had Alexandra Batshew from Los Fresnos United. And Ms. Gracia Benavides from Los Fresnos United. Our AMC twelve, which are juniors and seniors at the high school, Los Fresnos High School, we had, in third place, Mr. Aaron Molina, who could not be here today. In second place, we had Bernardo Avendaño. And in first place, we had Gabriana Garrido. I would also like to recognize the efforts of our secondary math strategist, Mrs. Verónica Macías, who has also assisted with the coordination of this contest. And of course, the success of the students could not be possible without the love and support of their parents. So, if there are any parents in the audience, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you, students, and congratulations on your performance.
Great job, everyone. Mrs. Tadon, thank you so much for all the work that you and your staff do, ma'am. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. Um, again, come before you this, uh, this month, uh, now with the CTE, uh, uh, clubs. These are the CTSO that we have. So, we have five different clubs that, and all of these students that are showing up today are, that are students that made it to state and represented Los Fresnos. Uh, first of all, we have DECA coming up and, uh, represented for that, and the sponsor is Mindy Kirov. She'll tell a little about, about the program and how they did.
Good evening, administrators, board members. Dr. Salazar and family, thank you for coming. We are? We are DECA. I hope by now you have heard about it at some point or another. I think we try to do a good, a good thing about marketing it. So, I'm gonna summarize it a little bit, and I'm gonna stick to what I wrote down so that I don't go on and on, 'cause I can go on. We had a really great year. DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges around the globe. Students compete in a variation of events that include testing, role plays for solving business scenarios, creating business proposals by presenting new ideas for business ventures, and strategies for helping existing businesses soar higher above the competition. Students travel at the district, state, and international level. This year, students competed in McAllen, Houston, and Atlanta, Georgia. The professional growth students develop along the way is outstanding. They truly grow out of their shells and develop leadership and business communication skills through activities that also include community service. Their ability to network with the other DECA members their age, not just here locally, but around the globe, is just an added bonus for them. I'm gonna start by, um, presenting to you the students that competed at district and earned a, um, district finalist title and competed at the state level in Houston, Texas. First, we have, uh, tenth-grader Soraya Moreno. Tenth-grade Yunes Ramos. Eleventh-grade Sabian Carvenas. Eleventh-grade Israel Gomez. Twelfth-grade and senior this year, Jose Omar Mendiola. And tenth-grader, we have Briseta Guerrero, but she's also our incoming vice president of leadership for this next calendar year. Another incoming new officer for our twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year is vice president of finance, Carolina Herrera. Vice president of marketing is eleventh-grader Andrew Robledo. Vice president of hospitality is eleventh-grader Emma Caraveo. Vice president of career development is eleventh-grader Carla Jiménez. And our tenth-grader, but here we're gonna pause a little bit. She's, um, the new president for the new school year, but at the same time, she's also our District One president. The District One region consists of thirty-plus school districts from Three Rivers and Down South. We're pleased to have Roberta represent Los Fresnos at the district level, and there's no doubt that she may run for state officer next year. And last but not least, we have a senior who really excelled in competition this year. She made, she earned a district finalist title, a state finalist title, and also an international finalist title at Atlanta, Georgia. She was among the top performers in the exam portion of her exam, on the principles of marketing. We have our senior, Elisa Guerra. Students are quite hopeful for next year. We have our competitions slated for McAllen, and then we have Fort Worth for state competition, and, um, international competition will be hosted in Orlando, Florida next year. We thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Miss Kirov. And parents, if you're out there, please, uh, stand up and be recognized as well. Okay, next, we have HOSA. HOSA's a CTSO club that has to do with the health science. Uh, and again, we did very well. Uh, I'm not gonna stir the thunder. Ms. Rodriguez, uh, kinda spoke, speak a little bit about how they did and, and where we're going during the summer as well.
All right, good evening. My name is Monique Rodriguez, and I am honored to be presenting our HOSA and area state competitors. Uh, before I introduce these students, I would like to acknowledge how dedicated they were to this program and how much time they put into their competitive events. These students competed against six other areas in the whole state of Texas. Great job for representing Los Fresnos. To start off our state competitors, Cindy Ciserna, who competed in healthcare issues placed in the state competition and will be, be moving on to internationals and competing in Nashville, Tennessee in June. Our next competitors competed in team events under emergency preparedness in the category of EMT. Anaceli García and Emily Cortez moved on to the second round of state competition. Bralio Montivales and Aniston Martinez competed in the first round of state competition. Sydney Peña placed first in medical spelling and is advancing to internationals. Brianna García competed in medical terminology. August Benavides competed in pathophysiology. Isabella Chavez competed in medical terminology. Carla Orozco moved on to the second round of state competition in home health aid. And Fatima Alejandro competed in veterinary science at the area competition. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize our HOSA members for their accomplishments.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And next, we have, uh, BPA. Uh, Ms. Lester, uh, we'll talk a little about that program.
Hello, I'm Janice Lester, and I'm very blessed to be the, one of the BPA sponsors. Mr. Lugo, will you join me over here, please? Mr. Eduardo Lugo and I both co-sponsor, uh, BPA. BPA is Business Professionals of America. Our students compete across a wide spectrum of competitive events for business, industry, computer technology, healthcare, finance, and accounting. And we're pleased that, uh, this year, our first kind of, uh, initiative year is that we've, uh, initial year is that we had four students compete at region, and three of them qualified for state. And I'd like to introduce Hanya Garcia, one of our qualifiers for state in business law and ethics. Uh, they learned a lot in their first year at state, uh, leadership conference, and they're looking forward to returning next year. And, uh, we also exposed them to campaigning for state officer positions, so we're hopeful that they'll also, uh, deepen their involvement in BPA by running for state office. Thank you for your support, uh, for what we do in competition, and thank you for allowing us to, uh, recognize our, our great students in BPA.
Thank you, Ms. Lester. Uh, next, we have VIDA. Uh, VIDA's a crucial, uh, component of our program for, uh, CTE. Uh, they provide a service that's invaluable for our community. But I'll, I'll, I'll just talk a little bit about that program.
Good evening, um, board members, Madam President, is that here? And Superintendent. Um, my name is Christy Vargas. I'm the VIDA sponsor. I have been VIDA sponsor for the last fourteen years, um, and I'm very glad to give this opportunity to my students. It's a skill that they would have been developing along with me. Uh, we've been training, I've been training the students for, uh, probably in October, we started training, and we finalized it in January. Of course, we had a little hiccups around the, along the way. We had a little co-front on our main mandatory training, but the kids actually showed a lot of promise by the, showing up on that Saturday where they were willing to commit to do the community service, uh, for the entire community. Uh, they did assist with, um, a hundred tax returns. They, um, the entire overall tax returns that we do along with the WIPPA library guided along with the United Way, um, have been, um, to the category of, um, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight tax returns. Uh, the, my students came in after school to do the t- community service tax returns, and they also, when they did have time after their classes during the, during the day. So, they would come in and actually be anxious. Ma'am, do you have a tax return that I can work on? So, sometimes I would talk, I don't have one right now, but come later today, and I will probably have something. So, that showed me that they were ve- very dedicated to something, um, that they will take along with them as a skill, uh, as an employment skill to be offered. And I know some of my students are going into finance, so they, after this dedication that they showed in this training, I do understand that they love the, the skill that they're developing. And I'm very glad to be able to show them the guidance to be able to nurture that growth in their life. Okay? The following student is Sabian Cardenas. Daniela Jaramillo. Carla Jiménez. Sebastian Ortega. Yunes Ramos. Andrew Robledo. Christopher Shaver. Lance Stelling. And Savannah Torres. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arriola. Um, next, we got Skills USA. Uh, our two teachers, our two instructors, uh, one of them happens to be at the sports banquet, and the other one's out ill, so I get to present. And I'm very fond about this, uh, this CTSO. This is the first year we compete in Skills, uh, USA. Uh, Skills USA is a broad range of, uh, events. I mean, there's over three hundred different events that they could compete in. So, we competed in one in, in A/B television production, uh, and the other one was screen printing. Okay? Uh, so, in this area for, that I'm calling out students will be for quiz bowl and television productions. Uh, the one student that made it to international is not here today, so he'll be competing in July as well. Okay? Uh, first of all, we have Agavella Acalón. She's a junior. Next, Annabelle Juárez. A junior. Ilise. Gia Alaya. A junior. And Iliseo González, a senior. And again, these students competed over, uh, with, uh, over three hundred, uh, other students in that competition.
Mr. Guerra, who's the student that could not be with us, international?
Uh, Mr. Hernandez, uh, son, actually, the instructor. Uh, Ivan Hernandez's son as well. Dominique Hernandez. And he'll be representing us out in, uh, international on that one. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guerra. Thank you all so much for everything you do. Thank you, CTE. And American Mathematics Competition. Great work that we're doing, our students are doing. We're super proud of them. Uh, we're gonna move on, uh, with tonight's agenda. Roman numeral six, public audience. No one signed up for public audience. Roman numeral seven, public comment. No one has signed up for public comment. No one has signed up for public comment. We move on to Roman numeral eight, district reports. Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Trevino and members of the board, this evening we present to you our finance reports. Each month, we bring you an update on these reports, and I wonder if anyone has any questions at this time.
Does anyone on the board have any questions regarding the reports, monthly reports? There being no questions, we're going to keep moving on. We have Roman numeral nine, consent agenda. This is the time of the year where we are closing up this year and moving on to next and preparing for that. So we've got 20 items on consent agenda as we usually do. I will ask... I'll give everyone a little time so that they can review that. I know that we've gotten the information prior to this meeting, so if you want to pull any item on the consent agenda, please let me know, and we can pull that. There being no items pulled, can I have a motion on consent agenda, items one through 20? Mr. Amaya.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve consent agenda as posted.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Castillo, first and second. All those in favor of passing consent agenda, number one through 20, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Roman numeral 10, action items. We have six action items tonight. The first one, discuss and take action to approve the application for appraised value limitation on qualified property submitted pursuant to Texas Tax Code Chapter 313 by Puerto del Sol LLC. Do I have a motion? Mr. Henderson.
I have a motion, Mr. Chairman. I'll move the board authorize consideration of the application submitted by Puerto del Sol LLC under Chapter 313 of the Tax Code. Authorize the superintendent to engage Moke Casey and Associates LLP as financial consultant and Walsh Gallegos as legal counsel. I'll further move the board authorize the superintendent to extend the 150-day deadline for approval of an agreement if he determines it is in the best interest of the district.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. We have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Amaya, we have a second. All those in favor of item number one, discussing and taking action to approve the application for appraised value limitations on qualified property submitted pursuant to Texas Tax Code Chapter 313 by Puerto del Sol LLC, please raise your hand. Apologize. Discussion?
I'm not quite sure. This is just... All we're doing is approving the application, right? It doesn't... I think you explained that it doesn't commit us to anything at this point.
That's correct. And Ms. Priscilla can comment on that?
Hello. Okay, so the process is that today you are just accepting the application, authorizing the superintendent to move forward in processing the application. The application will then go to the Comptroller of Texas. They're going to look at it, review it, see if they want to approve it. And then in five to seven months, the application is going to come back, approved by the comptroller or not. And then at that time, you're going to enter into negotiations and then into a contract. So right now, you are not entering into any agreement. It's only solely to process that application. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have a representative from the company here. If you guys have any questions for him.
Thank you, Ms. Amaya. Thank you for the clarification. So with that said, all those in favor of item one, please raise your hand. Unanimous, four to zero. Number two, discuss and take action to approve the purchase of a scoreboard for Leo Aguilar Memorial Stadium from Byboard Vendor Dectronics. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo?
I make a motion to approve purchase of scoreboard for Leo Aguilar Memorial Stadium from Byboard Vendor Dectronics.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Amaya, any discussion? There being no discussion. We have a first and a second. All those in favor of approving the purchase of a scoreboard for Leo Aguilar Memorial Stadium from Byboard Vendor Dectronics, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Number three, discuss and ratify approval of out-of-state student travel. A, Graphic Design Skills USA, Atlanta, Georgia, June 20th through the 25th, 2022. Do I have a motion? Yes, Mr. Amaya.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve out-of-state... Well, we ratified the approval of out-of-state student travel by Graphic Design Skills USA in Atlanta, Georgia, June 20th through the 25th of this year.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson. We have a first and a second. Motion, any discussion? There being no discussion. First and a second, to approve... Ratify approval of out-of-state travel, student travel for Graphic Design Skill USA to Atlanta, Georgia, June 20th through the 25th. All those in favor, raise your hand. Passes unanimously, four to zero. Moving on to number four, discuss and take action to approve employment contracts for the 22-23 school year. A, administrative staff contract recommendations. B, campus professional staff contract recommendations. Do I have a motion? Ms. Amaya.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we... Hold on. I want to make sure I got through that one. That we approve employment contracts for the 22-23 school year of A, administrative staff contract recommendations and the superintendent's B, campus professional staff contract recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Amaya. We have a motion. Do I have a second? Anybody? Second? Mr. Castillo? You got a first and a second? All right, any discussion? There being no discussion. We have a first and a second, to approve superintendent's personnel recommendations for the fol... Nope. Yeah. For the following position, 21-22 school year, 18... No. Am I going back? Yeah, yeah, there we go. Thanks. Apologies for that, guys. So we have a motion to approve employment contracts for 22-23 school year. A, administrative staff contract recommendations, and B, campus professional staff contract recommendations. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Number five, discuss and take action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the 21-22 school year. A, teacher. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo?
Motion to approve, sir.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson, first and a second, to approve... Motion, first and second, to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the 21-22 school year. A, teacher. All those in favor, raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Number six, discuss and take action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the 22-23 school year. A, teachers. B, non-certified CTE teacher through District of Innovation exemption. C, licensed specialist in school psychologist, LSSP. And D, licensed specialist in school psychologist intern, LSSP. Do I have a motion? Mr. Henderson.
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's personal recommendations for the following positions for the 2022-23 school year. A, teachers. B, non-certified CTE teachers through District of Innovation exemptions. C, licensed specialist in school psychologist. And D, licensed specialist in school psychologist intern.
Do I have a second? Mr. Amaya. We've got a first and a second. Any discussion? There being no discussion. All those in favor of approving superintendent's personnel recommendations for the 22-23 school year, please raise your hand. Unanimous, four to zero. We're moving on to closed session. We have nothing to discuss in closed session, is that correct, Dr. Salazar?
That's correct, sir. All personnel recommendations have been approved tonight.
There's nothing for open session, leading us to announcements.
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, on Wednesday, May 18th, we'll host Bacolod at Los Fresnos High School gym at 7:00 p.m. On Thursday, May 26th, we'll hold the last day of classes and early dismissal for secondary schools. Friday, May 27th, is a teacher workday, and we will hold commencement ceremonies for Los Fresnos High School on Saturday, May 28th at 7:00 p.m. at Leo Aguilar. And then Monday, June 13th, is when we have our regular school board meeting, first one of the summer.
Thank you, Dr. Salazar. Anybody else have any announcements? No announcements?